Okay.
Yes, we'll phrase, um, we'll phrase a team to that topic. To those questions.
Okay, um, let's, uh, before you bring it, okay, you brought the person in already.
No, no.
So what I was trying to say is that right now.
Yes.
Uh, since we have this on ground.
Yes.
What we are talking about, the number two of it, eh?
Okay.
Uh, he said we are diversifying, we're diversifying from, uh, what do you call it, from oil.
Yes.
The main thing is, how is the government helping to promote indigenous engineering and ingenuity of Nigerians? We have so many people like, there are some boys that, that built this sanitizer with sensor.
Yes.
In the country, there are some guys, okay, Uche is here.
Yes.
You have brought him in, so, uh, there's this other one, um, what do we call it? There's, there are some boys that build Kekena Pepe, that Kekena goes with solar. I don't know whether you've heard about it.
Yes, but if you look the question, it's pertaining to us here.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand, but because what I'm saying is this.
Honorable, you're welcome.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mark.
Yeah, honorable Uche, you're welcome, my dear.
Are you there now?
Nah, but it's the day in cycle too.
Good evening from France, ah, Paris man, how are you?
I do.
I agree too.
I help you.
How does I do now?
My brother Sunday hit us, not a team.
Ah, he's a hot phone aside too.
Yeah, he's a hot, no be small eh?
Wow, thank God, thank God.
Thank God, my dear. Yeah, thank God.
Mr. Mark.
You're welcome, oh.
Thank you very much.
I hear you, sir.
Well done.
Yes, thank you, you're, you're always a puncture.
Puncture, yes.
Yeah, what can I do now? When Mr. Mark call, I answer.
No, no, some people know they do so. You, you understand times, eh?
It's very important.
You know, you know Nigerians, we basically don't keep the time, I don't know where that is at us. We can't get.
Hi, great, uh, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Madame Evelyn. You're welcome, you're welcome.
Madame, good evening, oh.
Yes, that's.
Madame Evelyn, always driving, eh?
Yes, that's the president.
We need you alive, please. Don't be driving and be talking.
I don't like, but I also reach out.
Okay, please.
Please concentrate on your driving.
Concentrate.
No problem, no video, but I'm hearing you before.
Okay.
Well done.
All right, thank you.
President Mike, you're welcome, sir. Mike Omerico. Honorable. I see you.
Molo.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, can we see your face a little bit, please? Oh. Wow.
Madame Mike, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I'm greeting you from Fela.
How are you?
Fine, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mark.
Well worked.
Sir Mike.
Higuain.
President himself.
Kikimbe.
The Prime Minister of Napolitani. How are you, sir?
Fine, thank you.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry, gentlemen, we, let's just give, it's just eight o'clock now. So maybe in the next five minutes, um, we'll begin, and whoever comes will be joining.
That's okay, don't worry, we're used to our African time.
We no longer want African time, please.
No, eh, hold on, you see, eh, let us be, let us be creative about what is Africa. African time, if we manage it well, yes, it is also time, as the Swiss time.
I understand, sir.
You know, you know this, you know this.
Honorable, eh, Zemwa, we greet you, Honorable Kinsley, we recognize your presence.
Good evening, brothers.
Good evening, yeah, Uche, you can go on, sorry.
No, I was trying to, eh, you know, um, consent with what Mr. Mike was saying concerning African time. Uh, unfortunately, you know, this, eh, this word, African time, has been existed before you and I were born. But, um, later, um, as some findings could be able to tell, there was a reason why there was an African time. Because during those days, you have a lot of things that are not conducive, especially for people who travels to one place or to another. Take, for example, our country Nigeria, you know, in a station where you have bad roads, in a station where you don't have electricity, in a station where you don't have a portable water, all those things put together can make a man, you know, wherever, if you're attending to a meeting, you might be late. But I don't see the reason why even in Europe, we still be talking about African time, doesn't make sense to me. Uh, he said, we shouldn't be dwelling into that kind of, uh, we should call it speed, it's speed. When somebody is late, it's not African time, you're late, simple and short, period. Eh? That's what I want to say.
You're very right, uh, I was also trying to say enough of all these blames on North Africans because, uh, we have a lot doing, when they say African time, we should also understand that, uh, they always want to put everything negative on our own side. Then we never had, we never, we never had clocks, we never had watch, timepiece. We tell time with our shadow and everything, we regulate the way it moves. And then, uh, most times, you know, in an occasion, uh, normally people say that the big masquerades don't come out early. You understand? They always come when the, when the younger ones have, must have spiced up the show, just like an entertainment where before you bring out the main artist of the day, there must be some show, you know. So, let's just take it that it has happened, it has happened, but at the same time, it's not African time, what we say is late, we don't have to buy their ideas. Everything that comes from us is negative, we are better and hundred percent more sophisticated than them, only that we have failed to harness our potentials.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, you're very correct, you're very correct, sir. But I believe, eh, it's high time we start, eh, leading, leading by example, you know? Uh, just like you said, uh, the bigger masquerade usually comes out very late. But in a station, we are all the masquerades that are going to perform, our big, our big. I wonder who is going to come earlier, who is going to come late? So our people should try and, um, I know that most of these things we does are voluntarily, but when you don't have time for it, you say you don't have time for it, simple. But if you want to get involved with it, you get to make out time for it, very important. Mr. Mark?
Yes, so, um, I, I think we should just go ahead, then, uh, whoever comes, I know, join in. So, um, with all apologies, I'm going to mute everybody. Then I'll open up, uh, our honourable, the special guest with us. We have to go ahead, eh, so I'm muting everybody. Excluding. The honourable excluding, 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 okay. So, good afternoon. Great people of Nigeria in Europe. You are all welcome to our second edition of the Schengen Story Virtual Town Hall Meeting. Uh, eleventh of July twenty twenty. So today, uh, is a special day, uh, we actually have, um, the honour of the Embassy of Nigeria in France. I'm still waiting for the minister, and, uh, we're also waiting for the Embassy of Nigeria room. And, uh, Nido officers are here, NUNAI officers are here. So you're all welcome, and, uh, thank you very much for honoring this, uh, invitation. So, um, let me just introduce the honoreables that are here for now. Uh, with us here, as I can see, is the, uh, Naido, Nido, Nido, Nigeria Industrial Organization Europe, Italy chapter. Uh, his honourable doctor, Ibe Quay Lawrence, specially represented by the secretary, Mr. Ezewan Okoro. Besides, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you so much.
Good, then, uh, with the people here, I also see our great NUNAI officers. NUNAI is National Union of Nigeria Association, Italy. And we have the distinguished officers here, this is Samson Ho, the national president for NUNAI. This is Samson, you're welcome, sir. Yes, open your phone, you, I, I asked, are you open, open your phone? Great, then also with Mr. Samson is, uh, NUNAI National PR role, Mr. Uche. Mr. Uche, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, so coupled with, uh, the Nigerians all over Europe that are here, you're all welcome. And, uh, we hope our dialoguing and our discussions will be profitable. So, uh, let me also introduce ourselves, we are Schengen Story Media Company. Schengen Story Media Company is a news and media company registered in Italy, Milan, Italy. And headquartered in Milan, but we have coordinators and branches all over Europe. Um, I'm waiting for some of the coordinators, what we does here is, uh, my assistant, uh, that's Mr. Truma from France. Mr. Truma, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody.
Good, good evening, so, um, why are we on this virtual town hall meeting? You may want to ask, why are we, why are we bringing ourselves together on a virtual town hall meeting? Um. There is strength and power in a people of one nationality engaging in purposeful and progressive dialogue. There is strength and power when a people of one nationality engage in purposeful and progressive dialogue. We are a people of one nationality. Uh, what a lot of Nigerians don't know is here in Europe, the white man don't see us as Igbo, Hausa, Yoruba, and Bini. White man, Europeans see us as Nigerians, African Nigerians. So that means that we are one. We are one. So, um, as a people with one nationality, there is power when we dialogue together and when we, excuse me, I think somebody is having a problem, excuse me. Hello? Mr. Sima, you're in now, it's you that on your audio, that, no, no, sorry, I switch people, eh? I switch the audio off, or you can open your video, so don't worry, when it's time to open your audio. It, it, it's all right, it's all right. Okay, Mr. Sima, thank you, sir. Okay, so that was, uh, Mr. Sima, the vice president, he's having problem connecting. So we, we decided to have this dialogue because there is no better time in the history of Nigeria, in Daspora, and yes, in Europe, like now. When Nigerians in Europe can connectively, connect together. And make impact in our country. We all have something in common, honoreables, we all have something in common, and that thing we have in common is, we all desire for a better Nigeria. Even though we are here in Europe, we, our hearts and our soul, our thoughts desires a better Nigeria. So with that in view, I say welcome again to those coming in, you're welcome. So I, I, I want to also put it out that, um, have rules in the, in this engagement, in this process. The rule is that we'll be put, uh, you are entitled to just one question, so that everybody can also ask question. You're entitled to just one question, ask, and please have it in mind that, uh, the honoreables with us are representing offices. And, uh, they hold positions that are notable, so we should ask our questions with respect to those offices they hold. So, um, with that, I say welcome again, and, um, uh, I hope we are all listening. I hope everybody's connection is, is together. Great, okay, so to start with, um, the, the first question, I, I sent to, the first question I sent out is in relating to what is happening now. There's an awareness among human, the human race, there's an awareness among people for, uh, progress. So I put to the officers and the honoreables with us here, what are your plans to engage Nigerians into being relevant in their various host country? So who is able to? You, you, you can show by hand on your screen, on the Zoom screen, uh, icons of hand, hand like this. So to make your interview, you can show yourself by your hand, and I, I, I can open you up if you're muted, or I, uh, allow you to speak. Thank you. Okay, that, uh, President Samson Ho, yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Actually, uh, once again, good evening and thank you, Schengen. Um, and, uh, also greetings to participants of this, uh, evening conversation. You know, your question was true, like a generic question.
Okay.
Uh, probably let me try and see whether I can, uh, trim it down a little bit so that it can accommodate what I feel, I should say. When you said Nigeria being relevant in their awareness, um, Nigerians are not living in Daspora, and we live in different countries. If not, also in different provinces, because there is always an issue of where you are standing, north and south. But I will be very, very specific so that I don't, uh, uh, muddle up things. And again, make it direct, when you ask the question, relevance, what's, what is the awareness to make Nigerians relevant? Relevant, in my understanding, has different things that can make you relevant, either it's positive or negative. So let us choose that we are being relevant, negative, I mean, positive. But we shouldn't undermine where some of these things are also challenging for us. But for us, that are stewards, what are called first standards. I think we're grateful to establish that is a platform in Italy where we live. And based on that platform, we are trying to also harness, uh, various Nigerian, uh, population. Via, uh, the numerous, um, Nigerian associations we have. That is not to say also that there are not individual Nigerians who are also using platforms of NGOs. In this regard, we are definitely making an impact, um, even on those scarce resources. Or what I call operating on a zero account, because all these things require resources. But be that as it may, we are using the very available one, just like Adam Smith. Uh, rightly says that using the scarce resources to be able to manage it properly under your scale of preference, to be able to give a better economic benefit. And I think I can post that today, if we look back to what it was like before in terms of how do we relate with the host country. There is a better, or what I will call more improved relationship. You can actually have the relevance of city now, the dialogue that comes back.
Bini.
Also, all these things would not be possible or be able to be successful where you don't have a Nigerian mission. Who doesn't give you a better support. So, uh, uh, I also believe that the Nigerian mission in Italy has in every way helped to see that that particular uh, process is something achievable. But have we done all we need to do? The answer is no, because there is room for improvement. Uh, you can have Nigerians who have come from different, uh, uh, what I will call frontiers into a place with different educational backgrounds and understanding, and, uh, gathering them once. And have that type of formal Nigerians who we possibly know. Uh, remember that, you know, in the world of today, education forms the foundation to how which people can be able to what, to harness information. But once again, also, we have Nigerians who have been able in their little way, break down communication, the way it should go down to them, is a gradual process anyway. But, uh, in a nutshell, as an opening statement, we are making progress in terms of our relationship with the host country. And, uh, we are having people who are doing very, very well in their different endeavor. And if Nigeria, as it were, have a larger population of over a hundred and something thousand, and a good percentage of them are working and contributing to the country, the host country. It means that also we are contributing economically, we are also participating socially. And we are at the same time making sure we are doing our best to see that the relationship improves via our consulate that we have. So I think we're making progress in that area where we live, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, um, Naido, okay, yes, all right, sir.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be with you people tonight. Without wasting much of our time and missing words, I represent Naido. That's Nigerians Industrial Organization. The Nigerian Industrial Organization was established for obvious needs by the federal government of Nigeria in the year two thousand. And that is to mean an organization that actually represents all Nigerians that live outside Nigeria. For this reason, Naido is structured accordingly. With Naido have continentally, Naido Africa, Naido America, Naido Europe, Naido Asia, and so forth and so on. And under each continent, you have na- national organizations of Naido. For example, in Europe, you have Naido Europe, and therefore under Naido Europe, we have Naido Italy, Naido Germany, Naido England, Naido and so forth and so on. And to particularize in this case, I particularly represent Naido Europe, Italy. And to go back to your question, as how the Nigerian industrial could be relevant in the overall improvement or development or welfare of Nigerians, both in Nigeria and outside Nigeria. I think that is what, that your question is actually intended to reveal.
Okay.
If I'm, if I'm not right, please, uh, do remind me.
Go ahead, yes, you're, you're together.
Be as it were, that means, in what ways can we be very relevant? And what is the intention of government, or what is the overall ambition or aspiration of the collective interest of Nigerians home and abroad? As I said, there are many ways and perspectives of looking at these things. It has a historical perspective, it has economic perspective, it has political, it is also diplomatic. It's social, it's cultural, and so forth and so on. And if we take it that way, our topic tonight will be so light for the purpose of this particular time here. But let me therefore try to be narrow, and particular in this case, while we are making a sort of introductory statement here. Um, I don't know, when you people started, whether you had the time to actually introduce the various contributors to this, uh, town hall, uh, discussion, so to call. And my name, Sazemwakoro. And in Nigeria, I'm from Ichiagui in Iboni State. I am a writer of a profession, and I have done some books. One of them is Animal World War, another is Monkey Boys, and the third is Scores of Freedom. And that's who I am, moreover, to add to that, I am the general secretary of Naido Italy. I have also served in NUNAI as a general secretary in the past. And, uh, I am presently the president of Nigerian Union in Milan. So what am I trying to say here, that I've been involved actively, intellectually and otherwise, in making the contributions of the Daspora Nigerians quite relevant as far as I, as an individual is concerned. But collectively speaking, I'm not there to, there to say that the contribution or the relevance of Nigerians in Daspora is far reaching. Even if you take it back from a historical perspective, we can remember how Nigerians outside Nigeria were able to come back and fight for the independence of our country, even the continent as a whole. If we take it economically, there is no way to say that the contribution coming from Nigerians in Daspora, even far out streets, the mono economy that oil revenue is giving to Nigeria. the mono economy that oil revenue is given to Nigerians. The remitance coming from Nigerians in Dusporan back home is so huge and its impact on the life of the people at all levels, federal, state, and local level, even on family basis, is so far reaching that is something very, very considerable to keep in mind and be conscious of while we discuss. But let me not take your time, even as we discuss here, to stop so far as we go further into this discussion in particular and in general. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Honorable. We'll come to so many things you said. So but there's a hand here. That's our Vice President, President Sima. Sima, it's on you now. Mr. Sima. Mr. Sima, okay, Mr. Sima is not connected. Let's hear the Honorable, yes, Michael.
Go ahead. Yes. Oh, good evening, everyone. I agree with you, my president, I agree with you, Sir, President of Nuna, the Secretary-General of Naido. My sister, I want to thank you for recognizing me in a time like this.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Pastor Mike. I'm in Sicily, Palermo to be precise. Uh, my question is this, goes to the Secretary-General of Naido. When you say Naido is responsible for every Nigerian in the Africa. To be honest, I am yet to see the presence of Naido carrying Nigerians along in Italy. Majority of Nigerians don't know, even me myself. I have to force myself to know about Naido. Now, we know Naido, Nigerian Industrial Commission is formed by the Federal Government in the year 2000. But here in Italy, the Naido in Italy, so my own investigation, it costs money to be a member of Naido. It costs a hundred euro. And one of the Naido meeting I attended, I said this thing. Membership of Naido should have been automatically, Mr. Secretary-General, for every Nigerian. We know they need money, the organization needs money to run its affairs, but nevertheless, every Nigerian should have been an automatic member of Naido. For example, now, the Nigerian Association, the Nigerian Community, the Nuna. It, in the Nuna registration, it only costs an organization, a community, an association, to pay a yearly due of 150 euro, which cover for every Nigerian in that city or in that region. But why is Naido own particular, each Nigerian, for him to be a member of Naido, cost a hundred euro? This amount, I'm saying it again in detail, it is too, too high for individual. Because the Nigerians in Africa are supposed to benefit, get information from Naido. Now they are not, it's like they are not paying to get benefits from Naido. So please, Mr. Secretary-General, I wanted to address this issue concerning this registration fee of being a Naido member. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Michael. Thank you. So I think that's a question for, um, is Mr. Azinwa. Mr. Azinwa, can you please put, yes, open your phone. Your phone is muted.
Okay. Thank you so much, so much, so much, uh, Mr. Mike. And I would want everybody in this forum to listen to me and not just listen to, but to listen very carefully. You see, I started even by analyzing the structural setup of Naido itself that allows continental, national, and if we must come down to Italy, in particular in Italy, we have all structures, all mediums of Nigerians that exist in this country. We are talking of Nuna, we are talking of all local unions, Nigerian Union in Milan, Nigerian Community in Mantova, and so forth and so on. Even to extend that, we have Nigerian collective units like churches, like in saloons, like people who organize discotheque and so forth and so on, that there are Nigerian women organizations, there are Nigerian ethnic organizations. And each and every one of these organizations have their constitution, have their rules and regulations, and so forth and so on. And now, let me come back to the very important question Mr. Mark in actually posed up for this purpose. He wants to know actually, not just him, like many others, why would it cost a hundred euro to be a member of Naido in Italy? And he also mentioned that even to be a member of Nuna, each local organization pays 150 euro per annum, but it is on collective basis. These are the structural differences that operate within each and of these organizations, which are relatively independent of one another. But let me particularly address that of Naido as it is relevant. I agree with Mr. Mark that the hundred euro set even before people like myself joined in Naido have been considered over and over again. And we have come up with a measure to also allow people pay even on a instrumental basis of such amount. We have also considered even a reduction of that amount. And that is the reason why Naido is open and very democratic. When people who come to join Naido debate and dialogue, remember that the majority would always carry the votes and not an individual opinion. I think, Mark, your opinion is welcome. And I believe that all other Nigerians that will be joining Naido in the near future, when they come in united as women, then we can make it even less. But I believe and I have asked, and those who are there before me have reemphasized again and again that it is important to make an organization serious and that the members should be much, much committed. And there are rules they have established that have been guiding the organization in all this time in order to maintain discipline, in order to maintain the inner structure, and also the economic need of the organization. And any adjustment to that effect must be considered collectively. While your question is highly welcome, to be honest to that. I think with that, I would want to call on all Nigerians, more so those listening to us in this very hour. So come and join Naido Italy, and together we shall make the life of Nigerians in Italy a better life and also contribute as a relevance to make the life of our people at home more so better. Thank you so far.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, yes, Mr. President of Napoli. You can go ahead and open your phone. Mike Omeleko, open the phone, sir.
Okay. Good evening to the representatives of Naido and the president and his officials of Nuna. My name is reflecting already. I am Mike Omeleko, the President of the Nigerian Community in Napoli. Uh, it is good, we, we come to hear of the good works of Naido. It is good to understand their interest towards our home country, which we, we admonished, which we, which is always welcome. But I always, um, when I was a student and I first came to hear of Naido, for those who don't know who I am, I am a microbiologist from Nigeria, came here and studied pharmacy. So you define what you want to call me, a microbiologist or a pharmacist. I, I, I am, I am both. When I heard of Naido during my school days, it was pleasing to, to hear of that, of the group. Then I asked, what was Naido? Is it an association or government, government, a government institution? There was no clear interest, clear definition. All I could, all I could hear was, and as cities, and as cities reported in their website, that the central vision of Naido Europe is to bring Nigerians living in Europe together and identify those willing to offer their skills, education, information, technology, health, economic, economic, science, administrative laws, political, and corporate governance, et cetera, et cetera, to Nigeria, to Nigeria's national development. Then I said, well, this is very good, but I don't know if it is governmental or something wrong by group of, group of experts or group of specialists. And that brought another question onto me to ask, what about other Nigerians who are not, who are not experts, who are not informed in any way? In our statistics, today, our statistics, official statistics in Italy is, is saying that we are 170, 117,000 Nigerians. And most of these Nigerians are not professionally formed, which means Naido is leaving out a majority of the Nigerians. Then who cares for the Nigerians in Italy? That is where I then said, that is where I choose to go to, to Nigerian Association. And we went to Nuna, which, and Nuna covers the interests of not just Nigerians in Italy, but Nigerians back home. And looking at the constitution of Nuna, Nuna covers all Nigerians, individual or, or as an entity, which automatically means Nuna, Naido is also covered, the interest of Naido is also covered by Nuna, which satisfies the good intention I have for my beloved people, my beloved country. And honestly speaking, in the course of, in the course of my activities around Kampaya, I have never come to hear the interest covered by, by, by Naido in what, in what it is stipulated. And Nuna is also, is doing the same thing, covering from, from, from social, from social to economics. Only politics with Nuna is not involved. I am very happy to hear of Naido. Naido, I don't know if you know, that associations in Italy can participate in, in, in bettering the life of foreigners here and in their culture of origin. This was instituted, instituted by the, by the law of, Law Number 125 of, I think, 2004, which gives this possibility to work with, to work with them at regional, national, and EU, EU level. Then I think, then Nuna should be fully involved in this and Nuna should, sorry, I'm referring to Naido. The Naido should be well informed to communicate these to the experts whom it is representing. I have not seen this. My is not a criticism anyway. My is a way of improving Naido, because if Naido improves, it improves the situation back home, which we are all interested in. But, um, just, I don't want to, to keep analyzing. But in a nutshell, I would like to ask Naido, how far is it trying to go along to get in contact with all these professionals, pockets of professionals in Italy to get them involved in various activities? Because we don't even know, when you ask for statistics from, from back home, you don't know where to go to, not in, not in, not even in our missions. So thank you. This is my.
Thank you, Honorable Mike Omeleko of Napoli. So it's both a question and his submission. We have a hand here, Mr. Fidel. We have a hand here, Mr. Fidel Wilson. You can open your phone now, open your audio.
Okay, good evening, gentlemen. Is there any lady in the house? So if there is, I, my greetings to them as well.
Many ladies in the house.
Okay, okay. So ladies, good evening as well. Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I like what is happening this evening. I mean, it's, this is something we need to, we need to build up from here. You know, having said that, I just want to, you know, correct an impression so that before we don't go off track, you know, as the discussion progresses. My name is Fidel Wilson and I am doubling as the vice chairman for Naido Italy chapter and the public relations officer stroke assistant secretary of Naido Europe. In fact, I think the third one here now is the general secretary for Nigerian, Nigerian community, Roma Lazio. But the person I want to correct here is that, well, the general secretary for Naido Italy chapter is here and he spoke, spoke very well and what Naido represents. But I just, like I said, to correct an impression, NUNAI, Naido, as far as the objective for the Nigerians in diaspora organization, for the purpose for which it is set up, NUNAI as an association in, on default is already a member, just like every Nigerian in diaspora, specifically for Italy, is a member. The only thing missing is individual validation. That is where membership now comes in. So I hope I am clear on that. The general secretary have called for membership. It's automatically say, come and validate your membership. For us as an organization, every Nigerian in Italy is a diaspora and is a member, but for us to know you, you have to come so that we know exactly who we are. And I believe most of us here are members for us. In fact, everyone for us. So you only need to come in to, to, to validate your membership. Having said that, going to what, you know, and what Naido has to do, you know, in, in, in bringing all of us together, you see, because there should not be any, any confusion, as it were. Just like the last speaker, you know, coming from where, you know, what he studied and so on and so forth. I don't see a situation where there should be a difference. I can understand where there is a misunderstanding. And I want us to actually correct this going forward. And that is why I like this meeting. I want us to correct this. We must understand, first of all, we are all Nigerians, whether or not we are all Nigerians. NUNAI, as it were, because I am, like I said, the general secretary for Nigerian, Nigerian community Roma Lazio, which I believe deals with the grassroots of the people. In fact, I was challenged, let me just digress a little bit. I was challenged once by one of the leaders in our community here, but saying that, how can you say you represent diasporans and you don't know what is happening in the community? In fact, I went back and I thought about it. I said, this guy is right. I will say, that was one of my motivating factor to, you know, get to the community and understand what is happening, you know, like we say here, on the streets, because that is what it's all about. You know, because if you understand what is happening on the street, then you should be able to know where and where to touch when it comes to meeting the needs of Nigerians, where and where to, because that's what we're talking about. How do we, you know, improve the lifestyles of people? In, improving the lifestyle of people, at least you must have to get to know the people. So for me not to like say too much or take too much of your time, we need to at least clear our minds, disabuse our mind of any kind of rivalry going forward from here. You know, I can also remember of a meeting that we had at the embassy between NUNAI and Naido. It's, it's, it's just a question of, you know, personal understanding of what the goals and objectives are. If we can understand that, and I don't think there should be any problem, and I believe there shouldn't be any problem here at all. Once we can define the goals, then everybody, just like we are as individuals and as membership or as leaders or, or executives, whether Naido or NUNAI, understanding your status, where you, where, where, your, your, your office and working in that, you know, simplifies the whole process. And there should not be any kind of argument or rivalry whatsoever. It's all for the interest of all of us. So please, I want to say here in conclusion that let's disabuse our minds of any kind of rivalry that must be there, even in some of the forums, I see how people, you know, they talk, they post, they make things. For what? Let's not forget what we are doing is voluntary to begin with, is a sacrifice and a part of all of us. Nobody's been paid here, but for the passion that we have for our country, and that is why we do what we do. Mistakes is allowed, but when you also call to corrections, why not? Accept it. Nobody is, is, is above mistakes or correction, as it were. So let's remove, like I, I, you know, not repeat, I don't want to repeat myself. We should just forget whatever it is, what you like and what you don't like. Yes, we are here to air views, but whatever it is, bring it in a more constructive manner, where people will accept and do something positively about it. So thank you very much and hoping that, I mean, this kind of meeting will continue, where we'll come together to discuss positivity, progress and, 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 you know, the way forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, so much, Honorable Wilson. That's a very deep, heart touching speech. So we have so many hands going up. I don't know who comes first. Let's, let's, Mr. Kinsley, Mr. Kinsley, can you Yes.
It's already open.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, brothers and sisters. Anyway, I'm Kinsley by name, from Imo States. Specifically here in Italy, I reside in Sardinia. Actually, here, this evening, I'm representing a new association here in Sardinia region. That's newly formed. Then I'm very, very happy to be in this gathering this evening. I must thank the president of NUNAI, our brother Simon, then Uche in charge, for their effort, how they have been presently trying to communicate and engage, or especially we that are a little bit far from continent. If I may say, I may ask some question and same time bring us some of my own personal opinion and observation here in Italy, precisely in Sardinia. All these associations we are talking about, they are all good. We need them. But the most important thing I personally wants to know is the objective. Because a lot of stories, a lot of things has happened here in Italy for many years. Then if NUNAI or the association is existing, this exists and they're supposed to exist because we are here in Italy and they are there for us. What am I trying to say is that they must make it in a way that we, we belong and we will contribute and they will be there to know what we are passing through, what we are passing through, not personally, this name Nigeria. The way the Nigerian name has been staying in this country because of few brothers or few sisters, which we know. Then if such big association is existing, that's supposed to coordinate for our goods, if they are not there at the appropriate time, meaning that being in group does not going to help us. Secondly, association is something anybody can form with his own style, with his own capacity. But there are some good things today, generally here in Europe or Italy. There are some little helps or opportunities that can render one to push himself into this kind of voluntary association we are trying to bring up today. But the worst part of it is that maybe we Nigerians cannot be able to use that opportunity to achieve some good things that other people are achieving, if I may say, a country like Senegal, 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 because of lack of information, lack of communication, everybody stays on his own personal seat. So if we want to work in group and work together, these two big associations that has a high level should do what they call match back and find out where this problem, where there was all this linkage is coming out and try to adjust some certain things. Here, we are now one family. We should not hide the truth. There are some good leaders, all these associations that formed by, because I have shop or I have activity or I am here for many years, that, not even all of them, not even some of them want to know that all this kind of association is existing or contributes the benefit of the younger ones today in the society. NUNAI, NUNAI or association, people should, like I told President the other day that here in Sardinia, we have never registered officially, but I'm planning on that. I asked to him that, I would like to see the constitution, what it's all about, what it's talking about, go through it before I register officially to be a member. So all we need to do, since I don't know who bring this idea of this kind of a gathering, is a very good thing, may God bless such people that started it. Let's go deep and pick points. Every region has its own problem. If you people can bear with me, more especially here now in Sardinia. Nigerian people have become only instrument of promoting Italian, what do they call it, project. Last year, I move around, all the centro violenza, all the Akaza, it's only Nigerians who can see here. And maybe some of them, they are not even victim because they lack information. But all the nonsense thing they are doing or they are accusing them is not something that is standing them individually. You are Nigerian. So these are the areas I want us to work together and make sure that maybe people like you, people here that have been here for, for a long time, those of you that have study, have moved all over Europe, at least once in a, once in a while, we organize, you people should move around and do a kind of seminar, give information, invite people, talk to our people. We still have chance to call our attentions back. That is very, very important for us to do that. Then so far, good, all of you here this evening, I pray that God will still bring like this kind of a gathering, keep on going, because even for these few hours, a few minutes I'm here, I've learned a lot. I don't even imagine to see that Nigeria, we have dignities like this, maybe everybody feel that maybe the Nigerians in Europe is those ones in the streets, all that. But here this evening, I can see that we can be proud of being Nigerian, Nigerians. Thank you so far.
Thank you so much. That, that is Mr. Honorable Kinsley. Thank you very much. So he talked about, I hope the honorees are taking note of what we are saying here. Talking more on mobilization and going to the roots, reaching out to people, reaching out to Nigeria scattered around. Thank you, Mr. Kinsley. Yes, we have Mr. Iguima. President, I'll come to you. Let's hear people's submission, then maybe you give the answers. Mr. Iguima, can you open up, please? Open your phone, your phone is, yes.
Yeah, hello. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can hear you, loud and clear.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
Am I on, am I on?
Yes, you are on, go ahead, you are on.
Thank you very much.
We can all see you.
Sorry?
Want to see your face?
They are asking for your, your video.
Okay, for my video?
Yes, Kima, where?
Visible.
Okay.
Let's see your fine face.
Well, actually, it's not about my face. Can you see my face now?
Yes, yes, Igu.
Thank you very much. Well, actually, I'm, I'm the president of Nigerian community in Rome Lazio. Talking about introduction. And I'm also the, as God will have it, I'm also the national chairman of the All Progressive Congress of Nigeria Italy Chapter. So I would want to make my submission, or rather my contribution on two grounds. First, as a regional president and also as a national chairman of a recognized party in power that has its affiliates here in Italy. So if first, I'm coming down on the issue of Nigerians in Italy, I want to thank every other person that has spoken. But I want to correct an impression so that meetings like this will become, to me, will begin to achieve more results. Because I personally, for one, I'm someone who is engaged, who has businesses that engages me in a, engages a lot of my time. So, and even politics as well. So any little time I spare for meetings like this, I want to see that it achieves something, you know, tangible. And that is to say, I will also want us to help ourselves in every meeting to come out with results or with program of action that we need to follow up. Now, the essence of this time meeting is not about people saying their mind or saying how wonderful it is, wonderful to become a member of Naido or a member of NUNAI. I believe this is a virtual meeting at a time like this that calls for action. And it is a time that we should use to begin to say, what is the way forward? What do we do next? Then after coming to, getting suggestions and the way forward, we begin to act. Now then, this meeting becomes necessary. If not, people begin to see that as coming to, you know, express whom they are. At the end of the day, we end up not really getting the purpose of the meeting. So if I may suggest, this meeting, I think, should be channeled towards making our people understand the essence of Naido and NUNAI. First and foremost, I don't have a problem, people should understand that in Italy here, if not for egoism, let me, forgive me to use that word, egoism, we don't really have a problem, if not for egoism, we don't really have a problem working together, NUNAI and Naido. Now, like one of our contributors said, our general secretary and the vice chairman of Naido, he made a very wonderful contribution. He said, he wanted to know what it is like to deal with the ordinary person on the street. Therefore, he decided to become part of an arm of NUNAI, which is the Nigerian community in Rome Lazio region, thereby getting closer to the people. Now, NUNAI Now, Nuna, if I may go by the advice of His Excellency, the Ambassador of Nigeria to Italy. Whom I see as an exceptional ambassador that has tried to give much relevance to Nuna and Naido. Uh, I see him as a wonderful person, I must tell you that Ambassador Hina, with all due respect to him. He said, every Nigerian that happens to find himself in Italy automatically is a member of Nuna. What do we mean? That means he has, automatically is a Nigerian, just like in Rome Lazio, once you are within that. Ambit of Rome Lazio, we accept you, we help you, we assist you in any form. But there are certain privileges that you can only enjoy as a registered member of our association. There are certain privileges, there are certain positions and a lot of other things. So, but automatically by virtue of being in Nigeria, when you call on us, we will assist you. Because it's all about being brothers, being our brother keeper in a foreign land. So we should all look about doing things together. But because at a certain point in time, we also need to identify people by whom they are and where they can contribute more. We begin to say, okay, why not register? Why not begin to come for meetings, why not begin to participate, pay dues and contributions and stuff like that? So if I may say, let us understand the essence of Nuna. Nuna is there to take care of every Nigerian that finds himself within the ambit of Italy. If you are in Sardinia, being in Palermo, I love our brother that made a contribution from Sardinia, which is where most of our people, some of our people also arrive from. You take care of them there and begin to groom them on why they should register and belong to a body. So now, Naido itself, I can see, is not really focused, if I may say, on getting to know the ordinary Nigerian. Naido is more focused on the investment aspect of we Nigerians here in Italy. How do we begin to bring foreign investments back home and attract foreign investors back home and probably attract some investors from Nigeria back here, assist them in whatever way it is. So if I, it is also a good thing that we can also merge together. But it's all about leadership egoism that probably is a, adds as, will I say, as a hindering effect to working together. Like the contributor said before, we are all Nigerians. We are all four, you know, we're all brothers in a foreign land, brothers and sisters in a foreign land, sorry, with all due respect to the ladies in the house. So we all begin to look for how we work together, how do we strengthen ourselves, because divided, we don't stand much to gain. But when we work together as a body, be Nuna, be Naido, we, we, we are more strengthened, we, we, we engage more ideas and we achieve more. So I'm looking forward to a Nuna and a Naido that is reaching out to the regional bodies. I keep saying the regional bodies because these people are the people that deal with the grassroots. Naido itself as an organization is more like an umbrella organization that takes care, be, I'm a part of Naido as well anyway. But I think it does more to those who are recognized as members of Naido. That is those who have registered, who have paid their hundred euro, they have registered and they were, they are part of the meeting and all that. So, but it, it is, it doesn't go down to the ordinary boy that just came in yesterday to Italy, who probably doesn't even know where to sleep. Who takes care of him? And he might be in that condition for the next six months. So Nuna comes in there, so what am I saying, what I'm saying in effect is that. Let us begin to look at, how do we begin to do things together? What programs should we all do together to be able to better the lives of the ordinary Nigerian? Of even the rich Nigerian, of even the businessman Nigerian, of the student Nigerian. So these are the programs that I want this kind of town hall meeting to focus on, and not just about telling me who you are, who you are not, what you think, what you don't think. So I would rather want to be part of this meeting again with a, with a, with a program of action. A town hall meeting focused at contributions on this project, I don't know whether I will get what I'm saying. So, hello?
Yes.
I want to see a town hall meeting focused on a particular project of collaboration. So I would, I would commend the idea of even calling this town hall meeting at a time like this post pandemic. Let me not say post pandemic because we are still on it, but at a time like this, so it is something good. That we even invite embassy officials as well to see that we are all making efforts to work as a body. So it is a good thing if the embassy officials are also invited because. The ambassador himself that we have today is one that has always advocated Nigerians working together. And has always advocated is making relevance Naido and Nuna. So I would want us to tap into this so that we use it as a template for any other ambassador that may come anytime in the future. To say, ah, this is how we've been working in Italy. We use it to condition because if Nuna and Naido is up and doing the way we are working now. I don't think any ambassador that comes here will take us for a ride or think that we are just people to push over. You know, there's this bad name, they said, it's better you, there's a proverb in my place that says, it's better they give you a bad name and you don't come to demonstrate it with your action. And than when you say that you are this, you demonstrate with your action. So it is good that our brother said, we have personalities, we have brains, we have dignitaries, we have successful men in Italy. They begin to come together to project the positivity of Nigerians in Italy. It is a good thing and a platform like this is what it's supposed to do. So we begin to look at what actions, what projects do we begin to do these things with? And not just people telling us whatever they think and who they are. So if I may summarize, I would want to say that I'm happy this has happened. But if I may also want to address something to the Nuna, but Nigerian community Rome Lazio was highly disadvantaged. Sorry, I'm bringing the issue of Nuna onto this platform, but I believe Nuna is more like a conglomerate, if I may say. Naido is an association, but I would want to see Nuna as a conglomerate. So now, a conglomerate like Nuna has, the leadership has not done well. By not engaging Nigerian community Rome Lazio in the discussion concerning the C O N. When it came to the final stages and what have you, because it has affected us here. The, that exercise has affected us in Rome Lazio seriously. But maybe when we get to the next Nuna Congress, we begin to list out our, you know, will I say, our grievances or rather where we are. Badly affected financially and otherwise. So, but I want to use this opportunity to point it out to the Nuna leadership that is here present, because I don't know how else we can meet. That Nigerian community Rome Lazio was badly treated in that issue of nationality. Though is a wonderful program, a commendable program, a commendable program in its entirety. Meant to strengthen and embolden the association. But unfortunately, probably the way it was carried out, we needed to do better. So having said that, I would want to thank everybody in the house. And I would please like us to focus on a project that would really make sense and meaning to our town hall meeting today. Thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you very much, powerful God there, Mr. Igu Chima. Uh, there are so many hands going up here, let me take P A Hitro. P A Hitro, uh, open your phone, but before then, uh, I need to say this to Mr. Chima, Mr. Chima, we. They, they are supposed to be with us three embassy representatives. Uh, the embassy of Nigeria France, while you were talking, they called. The representative said he, he's having problem collecting, I wonder why? And he also said he's driving, so maybe that was why. Then we, we also have because Nigerian embassy Rome. Uh, last time we had the presence of the Consular for, uh, the Minister for Cultural Activities, Madame Yetunde. She promised to be here again today, uh, we've not seen her yet. So the embassies are fully aware, Nigerian embassy, uh, Spain said they are sorry, they can't make it. Um, the last minute, they said, wrote me that they can't make it because the ambassador, okay, the France representative is here now. Oh. So, so the embassies are all, uh, aware and the plan, actually, our goal is to have. All embassies in Europe, all Nigerian embassies in Europe be in the town hall meeting. Uh, future town hall meetings, so that is one. Then the other questions will be addressed by the president of Nuna and maybe, uh, the secretary of Naido. So, go ahead, Mr. P A, P A Hitro.
Anyway, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen in the house and, uh, let me thank you all for. Bringing this forum to us, very close to us now, this is the first time I'm feeling, uh, recognized as a Nigerian in Italy. Believe me honestly, because this is a, a very big avenue for us to express ourselves. Uh, give, uh, share ideas together, first let me introduce myself very well. That P A, that's Pa Hitro is just a name that I use in my platform, okay? So that's how, that's what I connected all to you people with, you know? My full name is, I'm also Sazua Friday. And I'm the, the, the coordinator general of the Nigerian community in Ravenna, Arid province. Uh, we're in charge of more than four, six provinces in my area, where they don't have stronger Nigerian union, okay? Uh, first, I, I want to understand one thing because I came in late, I'm very sorry, I told the P R O of Nuna that I'd be coming late because I have a family meeting. In the same zone that I, I switch off to join you guys here. Uh, for a very long time that I've been living in Italy here, uh, I observe that we have one single problem. Whether you form two hundred associations in Italy here, it might not work. When you don't have, if you build a house without a solid foundation, it will always collapse. The, the connection or the, the, the communication between the association, whether Naido or Nuna, that is not the problem we have here. The problem we have here is collaboration with the embassy. Okay, even in the developed society, like in the U S or in the Swiss or whatever, when they are in, outside their country. When they form a union strong as Nuna. Or Naido, that we, that exists today, because I don't want to go into the issues about Naido or Nuna. Whoever wants to form a association, uh, can have right to do so, would still offer them a right, you know? But since Naido exists already, or Nuna exists already. But I sense for the way I've been listening to the speakers here since I came in late. I decided to move myself to be quiet, to listen to that, just what is going on. I see some conflict of interest between these two organizations, right? But we define definition from Mr. Ida, the president of the Nigerian Union from Napoli. Make me understand one thing, probably maybe that was the reason why we're not communicating with, because. Eighty-six percent of us are living in Ravenna here, uh, not, are not Lenins. What I mean non Lenins is that we, uh, we don't have degrees of any profession we studied in school. I came here at my teenager age, I think I should be spending about thirty years in Italy now, so. Uh, the fact is that the embassy is, has lacked a communications. Or has weakened the, uh, the, the, the association in Italy here. My brother in, in Sardinia spoke about how Nigeria has been used in Geneva. How they create nuisance in the street and everywhere. I have made this suggestion of time with that number. I want to thank once more again as an urge, I never liked you from the beginning when you were contested, I have to tell you to your face today. But when I started getting close to, you know, this is me, but when I started getting close to what you were doing, you try your best now. And I've spoke about you on several occasions that I never knew you can be able to do better than this. The problem we have, my, my brother, uh, that is the Modretto, you are the Modretto today now. I want us to come to a point and meet as a memo with the embassy. Because the unions are just swept aside, they don't even listen to us, this is the first time we're engaging on the Nigerian community. Just imagine, eh, for example, as a Nigerian union president, I am speaking to you today now. I have paid online, okay, just an instance, so I paid online, not by myself, I couldn't pay on by myself. I've asked them, how did they do it? I paid with somebody a hundred fifty euros, but I didn't want to call some or to call anybody, I did a payment before. My son is supposed to travel in September, very soon, August, September for football match outside the country, he has no passport. So I was in the embassy, thank God to some urge and his P R O who gave me the authority. To allow Nigerians to, eh, enable them to fast move to get nationality. Seventeen years ago, when they brought out the gate of embassy, I was also there too as a vice president of the Nigerian community. The ambassador, this is a statement, I'm quoting it now, he's from Calabar, I've forgotten his name. When I went to the place with the six Nigerians to give their nationality, instead of them coming from Ravenna, it cost a hundred something euros to go to, to Rome. You know what he told me, he said he didn't come here to count the money in Rome. We paid, and yet we spent two days in the hotel for they gave us what we want. My kind of advice is that's an urge, if you are listening to me, I know you are there, so you just. Let the Naido or the Nuna make a concrete memo with the Nigeria embassy. Giving the authority to these strong two organizations, if the two has to exist to. It arrives because one is not functioning well, that's why the other one came up, this is a good spectrum. Because I don't think we are so much that one organization cannot govern in Italy, if there's a strong agreement or respect from the embassy. The embassy is supposed to have at least make it a duty, because they cannot go to everywhere in, eh, in Italy. Give some authority, writing all the questers in Italy, give the authority to go into issues that they cannot be able to reach. When Nigerians, believe me honestly, my brother, those who came from Libya four, three years ago, their head is stronger than coconuts. I know what I passed through in my states, they can even laugh at you. They tell that you cannot help them in anything, because they go to anywhere, they get what they want, they make their money by themselves, you don't give them food, you don't give them anything. The Nigerian embassy, you cannot go there and give them anything they want, if they send money to tax in the room, they can always get what they want. So it diminishes our power in Italy here. I will advise this body to, at least will come on next, next again, set up a body, selected body who are very lenient. Who know how to, uh, misnegotiate with the embassy for us to achieve at least thirty percent of supportability in power, authority. As an organization in Italy here, because you cannot control Nigeria when you don't have authority. If a Nigerian man knows that you are nobody, they don't give you respect. But if they know that with you, they can go to the next level, they answer you, sir. This is the problem we have in Italy here. So then, uh, my brother from Lazio just now was talking about, uh, the way he was, Lazio was being treated. I'm yet to, to understand, uh, understand that, uh, statement. I am telling you to do that, I am not registered. Uh, we last registered twenty years ago in Nuna, and that was a forgotten issue during Bar, eh, Injubari era. We've never attended any meeting all this while. And the day they did a meeting, they, they voted in some urge, I was called upon as a president, I went there that very day, we voted, he becomes the winner. What I'm trying to tell you is that I was communicated because of the way I was so active in my area. I always communicate with him, I recognize him as my president, whether, I didn't like him to win or not, when you win is democracy. I have to respect the rules and regulations, so I go to him in any information that I want to get from urge, he's their company witness. He not told me, look, he cannot answer everybody one, he not channeled me to the P R O, all this way I've been communicating with the P R O. So I want my friend, eh, Lazio president, please, with all due respect, me and you, we met twice in Rome recently. I met you the first day in Rome, I spent two nights in Rome. How was, this is my problem, my, uh, my question, this is a question to, I've, I've already suggested what we need to do to strengthen the union. I want to ask this question to my lenin friend, if you know anything that you were being subtracted. From this, eh, eh, exercise that's taking place in the embassy. Because the P R O called me and sent me a phone, two minutes please, and sent me a form, eh, that, please. Anybody that is interested, whether it's a registered member or not, would you fill the form and take it to, to, to the embassy? And they give me the modalities of payment, which I respected and I did. If I am living in a, in a Ravenna, I will say that we are more a full registered member of Nuna optimal. So I want to know if there's chance, if there's no chance, maybe next time you come, maybe we have numbers who can discuss it privately if you want to, to be like that. How was, eh, Lazio segregated from the exercise? Because I was in the room, I met two or three persons who came with, I think with Naido forms and, eh, eh, this and the embassy. Mr. Bello, Mr. Bello gave me a letter written by Naido on this exercise and it was respected, I saw it. I don't know who wrote the letter, but I saw it from Mr. Bello.
Thank you so much.
You understand me, so I want to know that, eh, that area, so I will know how to question and advise, eh, some urge on how he did segregate Lazio from there.
Okay, we, we will come to, uh, our president, Mrs. Samod, but first I want to, uh, recognize, I want us to recognize the presence of embassy of Nigeria France. Uh, Her Excellency Dr. Mudukwe, uh, here specially represented by Minister Ibrahim Danlami. Minister Ibrahim Danlami is the head of economics and a consular. Uh, Mr. Ibrahim, you're welcome, sir. So I'm, I'm, I'm muting you, so you can, uh, feel free to say anything, there are French, France Nigerians here also. And I'm sure they've been waiting to have you so they can put their questions. Uh, it is called virtual town hall meeting. Uh, the virtual town hall meeting is an open atmosphere for us to dialogue. And like we said, there is power in engaging in purposeful dialogue. And like we said, there is power in engaging in purposeful dialogue. Uh, I also said, we should please all remember that, uh, the honorables represent offices, uh, high missions. So respect them, the offices, the whole, and let our comments not be too, uh, got too, too explicit. So that they can, uh,
Absolutely.
And also be open to come next time when invited. Thank you. So you're welcome, Mister Ibrahim, uh, there is hand going up here. President Nuna Samson Hotz, let's hear you, sir. So open your phone, you need to, okay.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
You can hear you, sir. No, you've moved yourself again.
Sorry, come again?
No, no, go ahead, you, you're good.
All right, um, good evening, gentlemen, once again, and, uh, I will see the opportunity on behalf of Nigerians to welcome the minister, uh, from Embassy of France.
Sorry, sir, you might need to come close to your volume, your audio.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Uh, like I said, thanking the minister representing Her Excellency. I think, uh, if I'm correct, she represented France and Nigeria at, uh, concluded, uh, twenty-fourth, uh, two thousand and eighteen Nigerian Italian business forum. Um, in company of the Her Excellency from Portugal. Now, gentlemen, I would like to thank all that have spoken. I, I started earlier by being very careful. I didn't want this introduction of, uh, Nuna, where I was following what was seen as the agenda introduced. And, uh, because, uh, we are made up of people from other, uh, European countries to share our experience. I was being careful in all those, uh, introductions, but unfortunately, I think when the Naido brought in the issue, they decided to overform the whole thing to Naido issue, and now it's becoming Naido versus, um, Nuna. But in my own way, I will not flag that to the joint and issues, we would like to follow the program which were called a part. Uh, for those who express also some maybe discontent, we can discuss it at the appropriate platform. Um, the original program was awareness of Nigerians. Uh, to become proactive, to improve or increase our proactiveness and create the relevance to our host country. That is the discussion. You know, it's usually when people come in, when you want to sell your products and you don't have the marketing strategy, you begin to do a brakata, brakata, and think you can bamboozle people. Well, that is okay, is welcome, this is why we are Nigerians, we want to, you know, increase relevance to the host country. Our city here, as Nigerians resident in Italy, under my watch, I believe the whole people are working in different spare. You know, the reason I love, uh, when somebody was asked to, uh, introduce federalism, uh, somebody like, uh, A V Dasi looks at it as a political contriver, intended to reconcile the nationalism with the maintenance of state rights. And people like Professor K T Ware, seeing that the matter of sharing power between each coordinator independent or within his zone. The best thing is this, the Nigerian communities began to understand the consciousness. I want to follow, uh, my great honorable president from, uh, Napoli. Nigerian union, when they gather, they gather in consciousness. Usually what raises the consciousness to move together. The movement agitating for one particular thing, and the advocacy now will now come. And we have moved from one stage to another. If it were not in the days of being a student, it is now in the days of Nigerians residing and working. And I made it earlier that for our relevance to be well known, even when the host country tried to understand that, we, we, we tried to say no, we have been part and parcel of this country. And just like other African countries that have come, and we have an embassy. So by, by our fair agreement, by having a mission here that has been established since twenty sixty-one, we have surely, surely played a significant role. It will interest you that today, when we are talking about business and other improvement, that the host country itself has benefited from us as a country too. The Kaiji Dam we have today in Nigeria was viewed by Italians, so we hired them and we paid for it. We have the Ibeko Plan, and we have other thing, what does that tell you? But over time, because Nigerians who are resident here lost a sense of direction to a certain point. The need for every successful, uh, successive, uh, maybe group, we decide to say no. Let us find a way and redeem our patches. Because something happened where the disconnect began. But, uh, we don't continue that. What we saw was that, uh, the emergence of conscious Nigerians having of giving us a platform to which we can help to bring certain things to form and to the presence of our embassy to further help and enhancing the relationship within the host country has happened over time and a lot of things have done. It has not happened in the magnitude we might want it to trickle down, because everything we say the ordinary Nigeria. Remember that when you have a platform, the ordinary association cannot go and feed Nigerians individually. Of course, the what will be the first bedroom will be awareness to raise, like I said, early consciousness. But you can see as movement, as migration begin to change, a different set of Nigerians began to now coming, and the mentality differs. So when somebody was mentioned about people are going to school, you know what the basic foundation the school can give you? It helps you to expand your scope and further interrogate certain things that might be of use for you. And eventually, I recognize us working. So there is also, the, even when the wages are there, there are certain amenities you should enjoy. And obviously, you can only know some of them if information like this, I can't say it, earlier mentioned. Information is key. And the only thing these unions can do is to what? Become the advocacy of information. To make sure in each little way or as the people can understand it, to use various Nigerian capacities in different area to put that to know. And I can tell you that in those little way we have done it. Hito has spoken in his platform, he's using it to educate, inform also his audience. And that is why such a program can come, you give it to him, he's able to gather something and move to Rome. Those, it is not open an office where they come there to be people, that platform has given an opportunity. So we are leveraging on everything we know Nigeria can do here. They have Nigerians who are working in immigration, the past, yeah, we've been with them, and I recognize a different way. It will interest you that if not because of information, we know there was a Nigerian married in somewhere in the north there, and she has been on the chair for years. And we had to drive her car when it was brought to our attention because of some of this platform. And today, the woman signed, she wanted to be in Nigeria. And we helped through the platform and embassy, succeeded in taking her and getting the flight in Nigeria. Even in this pandemic, there were calls, and the Nuna had to support it internationally. I'm saying all these things are things we do, but we can't do everything ourselves. So every people, every person, person at where you are can actually do something. Somebody was suggesting to say we will have program. And the platform itself, the person who is calling, who is calling this platform today was seen as somebody rejected, but the people saw him and said, no, it can't be that bad. You must have a role to play. Everybody must all like Samson Hotz. But people might like also my idea, that's the most important thing. I won't do everything to please you or please every individual. But I must make sure I try within my best ability to make sure within the capacity I can to reach them all. And I can talk, well, not long ago, rhetorics of racism was of a big issue. And people like Omeri from, uh, uh, Napoli called attention. I told him, so long as you are here, you are, you are the Nuna minister. He's reading this, I will tell you, if you go and see the substitution, you have to shock the mayor of Venice. And now that attracted the rocks or some of the journalists who supported this crisis. And all these things were all done with the concept efforts of every Nigerian and the expectation of. Hello?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, hold on, let me conclude, let me conclude. Now you can use your. But you know, and Naido has no problem. There is no problem about them. All this one we are saying here is part of distraction. I will tell you that in two thousand and fifteen, under my leadership, we are able to draw the market of Naido and Nuna. And we agreed on a lot of things, and we are still working on them up to date. There is no difference, is, is that, it's not a difference. So please, for those who are sympathize too much on Nuna and Naido, let us not deviate from the, uh, subject of today. Let us focus on discussing it, and like somebody said, and come out with also new strategies at which to further enhance the, the relation that we have with our host countries, both in Italy, France, Spain, and other places we have in Europe. We always say this Nigeria, Dafara in Europe. So we are live as Nigerians and Dafara. So all this one we are saying has nothing to do with, Nuna, let us change that subject and discuss the matter as it were. Not to come out of despair. I have a lot of histories that have always been better known than the people who are even saying it. But that is not where we are. It is about us, including me. What is our relationship with the host areas where we are resident? And what are we advising our consulate in order to do further, to help and have that? I think that should be the subject. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you. So many hands going up. So I'm giving to Mister, yes, go, go ahead, sir. Uh, Mister Yusuf. O, o, open your phone, open the, the audio. Sorry, do it again, do it again.
Okay, no, it's very unstable. Hello?
Yes, you're open now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open. Good evening, good afternoon, everybody Nigerians and brothers and sisters. So I'm happy again to be here. Oh, well, I'm from France, I live in France, I'm, I'm, I'm part of the Nido in France. So my question goes directly to Mister Dalami Ibrahim. So I am, I don't know what he's see around, I don't see him again.
No, he's.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Mister Dalami, uh, uh, Ibrahim. You see, I'm happy to, to see you afar off. Well, um, my question is very simple. We want to know, the Nigerians in France want to know, why is it that the embassy has this sometimes some embarrassing attitude towards the citizens of Nigeria? The question is this, it's about passport. Eh, I have been living here in France for so many years. And at the same time, anytime you go to the embassy, I don't live in Paris. I'm not the only one, I'm talking about, about, uh, our fellow Nigerians here, who will leave their provinces to go to, uh, to the embassy in Paris. And they, they will tell them, either some of them have registered to, to change their passports from the, from the website and all those things. When they go to Paris, they will tell them, come back tomorrow. Well, you're just, not quite long ago, we're talking about a registration in Nido with one hundred euro. Let me make it plain to you people that it's not everybody from Nigeria that has the possibility to sort of go to Paris and stay in the hotel, and even the following day is not sure of having his passports, you know, changed or renewed. Please, Mister Dalami, since we've just come, we really hope you are going to inject a new sanity into the, this processes of the embassy in, eh, in, eh, in Paris. Because it's, it is becoming embarrassing that as a Nigeria, when you go to your embassy, they talk to you as if you are, I mean, as if you are a foreigner, but normally any Nigerian that goes to the embassy has to be welcomed as a citizen. Not quite long ago, about two years, about a year ago, we went to, we as Nidos, we went to, to, to Paris to meet, eh, the ambassador, the ambassador is. So we, in fact, most of us, some of them, some of us came from, um, eh, Marseille, some France, I mean, some, eh, Nantes, some Lyon, some of them slept in the, in the trains. So when we, when we go to the embassy the following day, it was on Saturday, the ambassador only spent one hour with us, one hour, and she left. So I'm telling you, and my brother, Mister, Mister Dalami, you are one of us, please make things happen better for Nigerians in, in, eh, in, eh, in Paris. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, uh, Mr. Honorable. Mister Ibrahim, do you have anything to say? Go ahead.
Good evening, gentlemen. I don't see any lady here, so.
Well, there are about five of them.
Well, okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, thank you very much for this, your kind invitation to join this town hall meeting. Unfortunately, the ambassador couldn't be here, so I'm standing in for her. Um, let me first commend most of those who have spoken. Um, there's no better way to resolve problems than discussing those problems. You are not able to solve them, but you can share ideas and learn one or two things from each other. Um, I think first of all, what we have to recognize is there has to be unity among all of us Nigerians. Whether it is the embassy or Nigerians, everybody has to be united to promote the interest of Nigeria. And that is what the embassy has been doing. Uh, Mister Yusuf, I, I want to strongly disagree with your, with your comments on the passport issue in the embassy. I've been in embassy now for almost eighteen months, and I know what the situation was before and what it is now. The embassy has tried to ensure that everybody who applies for passports gets his passport. People come in the morning, and all efforts are made to ensure that they get their passports that same day, later in the day. We had a problem long ago, but you have to understand that you can't just show up at the door of the embassy and say you have come for a passport appointment. When you go on the immigration website and you are given a date, a passport appointment date, you still have to get on the embassy's website to pick a date. Before Covid nineteen, the immigration section was attending to forty passport applicants per day, forty per day. But there are times when we have an influx of people from outside France who also apply for their embassy through, apply for their passport through the embassy. Now, what we have done recently is that because of Covid nineteen, we have streamlined our operations. We don't have a very big waiting room. So we're only attending to ten people per day. And those ten people, efforts are made to ensure anybody who comes in, in the morning gets his passport before the end of the day. You can ask. You can go and check with people who have done their passport in the past one or one year or so. Most people get their passport on time, and nobody, nobody is, uh, spoken to any of the embassy. I know that, you can go and check. The Embassy of Nigeria, France, I make bold to say that here, that we treat all Nigerians the best possible way. What we have, the challenge we have is that, and I'm, I'm glad some of you mentioned it here, one person mentioned here that when he said that, there are some people who have just come from Nigeria, who came in through Libya, that their head is very strong. You had Nigerians who have come in, half thirty years ago, as students, who know how things operate, who understand with the embassy. We have those who are just coming now, who don't even want to understand. We have our challenges. There are times when we don't have passport booklets. If we don't have passport booklet, there's no magic we can do. We cannot attend to you. Just before the lockdown in March, we had five hundred passport booklets from immigration sec, from N I S headquarters. Just before the lockdown in March, we had five hundred passport booklets from immigration sec- from NIS headquarters. As I'm talking to you now, those passport booklets are almost finished. I will make arrangements to get new ones. When we don't have passport booklet, of course, there will be a backlog in clearing that. On the issue of Nido, on the issue of Nido, I wasn't around when this incident you mentioned, when it happened. But I know that what the ambassador wanted was to try to get Nido. To come up with a united, a united faith. She wanted Nido to organize elections. And I don't think that happened the way everybody expected it to be. Since that meeting you have spoken about, there was a meeting about a year ago at the embassy, a Nigerian community meeting. Where all associations were invited, including Nido. I think Mister Sam Obaji was at that meeting, Mister Obaji was at that meeting, I don't want a Nido official. And most Nigerians seemed to, they seemed to pass some kind of, I don't want to say. But of no confidence, but they spoke their mind about how they felt that Nido was not catering. Was not catering to their needs. They felt that they had come to Europe and they were getting things done by themselves without the help of Nido. So they didn't see the relevance of Nido, so to speak. Now, the essence of that meeting that we called with Nigerian community was, we asked all the associations there. To try to find a way of working together and presenting their issues harmoniously to the embassy. But one year after that meeting, we still don't have a united Nigerian. We don't want, not an organization, but a way of communicating with embassy. These are our problem, these are our challenges. We still, we have not gotten a feedback yet.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um excuse me, excuse me, moderator, please, I want to say something now.
Okay.
I want to join what uh the High Minister Honorable Ibrahim has said. Actually, I am, I'm standing to say, or to support what he just said now on as regards the passport. I am a living witness. Before I went through hell to get my passport renewed. But by luck, I bumped into him in front of the embassy and he accosted me and asked me. What is the problem? I explained to him. And I am telling you, it took just uh two hours for him to make things happen. He told me a new person is coming in and when the person comes in, everything will be okay. And believe what I'm telling you, the new, we have a new passport officer there. If you go today to the embassy, Fr- uh France Embassy in Paris. Once you have your appointment, you picked an appointment and the time is there. You will go in the morning and you will leave the embassy on or before five o'clock with your passport. So when it comes to passports, I am saying uh uh High Minister. Taladi is okay, is telling us the gospel truth and these are the kind of people we want. To come into the affairs of Nigeria who can stand and tell you, you are a human being. And for the fact that I am working for the country doesn't make me a god or a lord over you. I met him and I was so shocked, the way he treated me as if I am his age mates. Or that I, that uh, you know, kind of uh, he's 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 working for me, the actual thing that was supposed to do. He spoke like an elder brother, as a father and as a friend. And it took place. So let us commend the good things that are coming from our people so that others might emulate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At least, uh uh Mister, just I just to reply Mister Danla- uh Danani, just because. Eh I'm sorry to jump in because it's my chance to talk to him. The fact is that I have never met Madame eh Dan- uh Danani before. What I was saying was the past experience. Well, I I for me, if things have come to uh to have been. Have been normalized, very good, I'm happy, but I'm just hearing this one for the first time. That is what we want to hear. I'm happy that the right man has come and what we want is that this type of things has to be generalized. So what I'm, what I'm simply saying is that I'm not trying to down it, I mean, I'm not trying to make you eh go down from your responsibilities. What I know that you knew the things were not working function, the function, functioning well, there was, there was a lot of malfunctioning before you came. So I have to say it, okay, if things have just been better, okay, no problem. What I'm simply, there are many Nigerians who are strong, who are stranded and they need to be answered because we are Nigerians, that's all. I am not shouting on you, I'm not down- downgrading you, I'm just telling you, you are a brother and you know what we are, what we face here. Yeah, as foreigners in the country. That's all. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, thank you for asking me that. So uh we are seeing going on, uh there are hands going up, Mister. Uh Anderson in Sima, your network is not steady. So when I open you up, you can't make any contribution, but your network is is not steady. Mister Sima, kindly go to eh 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 side of a house or somewhere where your network might increase. Okay, so yes, Mister Mike, President Mike, are you raising your hands there? I I please, I'm giving. Yes, two minutes.
Can I, can I, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh it is uh wonderful uh the discussion of today. Uh unfortunately, when uh we made discussions, people uh. Many tends to go on um. On eh uh on personal eh of of personal issues. There is nothing personal about what we are discussing eh here. In fact, um whether we like it or not, all contributions for me are uh are welcome. In fact, uh my colleague from uh Rome. Uh made a good, a good contribution. But at the same time, I was expecting um the final torch. When he said um. This medium should be used to raise ideas. Yes, it is wonderful to to hear that and I love it. And because uh of one thing or the other, when I said, look, attention. There is a law by the, by the Italian government of two thousand and fourteen, number one hundred and twenty four, which eh eh. Makes it possible for eh for immigrants, association, migrant associations to work with them. Towards eh the the well-being of citizens here and back home. He appears to have lost that eh that information. As a group that is eh. As a group that that is fashion towards that kind of a thing, I thought he could be wise to listen. But Nuna or Naido are not in collusion, not at all. They are all working for the interest of that country. We should not forget about, we should not forget about that. Um it, I I welcome that idea that we should be discussing what should, what will bring progress to that, to that country. And not, and there is nothing uh uh personal about anything. And uh before I conclude, I must thank Danla- Danami, Danami Ibrahim from France. What, uh thank, uh thank you for coming to our mist, to give uh some informations because. Information is exactly what we like, uh what we like. And above all, Shengay eh eh Shengay Magazine, it's a wonderful job you are doing. You remember the first day I I came to know you, I came to know you, I I welcomed it and. We, uh that that is what we need. You see, uh when I hear problems from the embassies. Uh it appears what touches us more. Apart from uh our our well-being has been, has become issue of passport. Now, if passport has become so cumbersome for to manage. In my professional ca- eh eh career. Um we don't accept, uh we we don't accept eh eh. Com- complaints, complaints, but we must give solutions. Now, we we have problems of shortage of passports, okay, then what are the solutions? Now, this, this is the same thing that happens not only with embassies, even with other companies. But once you, once you are dealing with any problem, especially when you are dealing with things of supplies, which eh. Passport now are things of supply from Nigeria, you must define the lead time. Now, I don't know if our embassies knows the lead time to deliver a passport. How long does it take? From the time of asking to the time of delivery? How how long does it take? Once you know this and you know the volume of eh the volume of passport you you issue. Then you can plan eh, you can plan eh, you can plan ahead before it it gets, before it finishes. Because if it finishes, we must not forget, many of the lives of Nigerians depend on passport. Without passport, you are, you are nothing in this part eh in this part of the world. And that is, that and that is why you see the anger vexed on embassies. Because without passport, without the passport, for those who depend on passport, automatically you become an illegal immigrant. And you know what it takes to come out of it, to come out of it. Let us not talk, talk of how you survive, but. Later, how do you come out of it? And this is what the embassies should be, should should try to guide against.
Thank you very much, sir.
Moderator, please.
Mr. Hold, sir. Yes. All right, before Mister Azim, uh the P R O of Nuna, Mister Uche has been raising his hands otherwise. Mister Uche, go ahead, um open your phone. Release, okay, sir.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Um just like the moderator has said, my name is Uche, I'm the Nuna P R O. Um I resisted all this why to, you know, raise my hand or make any contribution because. I was um a little bit flabbergasted on the direction our topic of today is moving. Um it was actually beginning to disintegrate into something personal. I'm I'm aware that many of us here are joining this forum today for the first time. But I still believe in eh, one of our Igbo adage that used to say that when eh. A cock goes to an area where it does not know, it tend to stand with one leg. Now, when you come to a forum whereby things have been moving before you arrive. Get to listening very well, get to ask questions before you make any con- any conclusion. Having said that, um I'm still going to go back to the the original question by the moderator, which I think is the topic of the day. But then there are so many suggestions that have already been made, which can never be forgotten or left unanswered. Now, first of all, I want to trash this idea of that this forum should come out with action or come out with a memorandum or come out with. Whatever is it that you want to call it. Our people say that a journey of thousands might always start one day. This is the second edition of this forum and I am somebody who believe in eh education. Where two or three people gathers and discuss and idea view, there is. Very, very highly percentage that somebody must learn something good there. It's not all about talking, it's not all about. Let's eh sign a memorandum and take it to the embassy. No, we have been doing all these things for all this why, it doesn't work. Now, it's high time we, in fact, just like today, and first of all, please, I want to greet the representative of Nigerian Embassy France. Um you're welcome, sir. Um I appreciate your effort to be here today. Nobody here, especially some of us here in Italy, can tell me they have not learned something, one or two things today from what he said. No, here, people have been killing themselves, people have been criticizing, people have been, you know, which is purely. Something good because the passport issue has been eh, it has been our pain, not just here in Italy, but everywhere in diaspora. But when you are involved in a forum like this, you get to tap from the experience of other Nigerians in other countries. If you know that, it's not only happening here in Italy, it's everywhere. So. Uh it comes back to that same thing. Is it the fault of the embassy? That is the question we should ask ourselves. I am saying this on the basis of all of us that are here today are leaders. That is why I'm saying this. I believe that everybody here today are leaders and there are some ways we should be communicating among each other. Unlike when we go to our people, the people who we are leading. Now, as a leader, we shouldn't be the one that are always pushing forward to, ah, it's embassy this, embassy that, this, that, that. I believe we should know better. We should be well informed. Not because the embassy pays you, not because you've been to eh Paris Nigerian Embassy in Paris or Rome or in Madrid, no. But because eh you are into something which enables you to learn from others. And find out why is this problem this way? How can you go, how can you answer the people who you are leading in your grassroots? Which answer will you give them? Just not go there and tell them it's the fault of embassy. No, it doesn't work that way because you and I know the truth. So many of us have gone to Nigerian eh immigration service. Now, it's easier in Nigeria because in East States you can, you get to get passports. But when you travel to a place like in Lagos or in Abuja, immigration service, you find out that what is happening in Paris or Rome. It's like eh, it's a small thing. So these are the things that carried us right from our home to different levels where we are, we are living. So having said that, I want to encourage people, I want to encourage everybody here today. Uh we are here to learn, we are not here yet to make a memorandum, we are not here to provide any action. We are here to have experience amongst ourselves. And we are not here to, you know, pinpoint eh neither from Naido or from Nuna, which one is eh is working. And we are not here to source for members. So please, let us concentrate on the topic of the day. So I also want to comment into the issue of the passports, um as it's already the the bane of Nigerian diaspora. And I always like to look at things in a way where a solution can be gotten, not in an area where somebody have to take a blame. I believe that the problem of Nigerian in diaspora with your embassies on the issue of passports. To me, the stars at the embassy, both in Rome and Paris, they are just civil servants, whether you like it or not. And even though they are not exceptional, of course, sometimes you go to an office, somebody will, depends on eh the the way the person wakes up. The person might talk to you the way you wouldn't like or not. But that, having said that, that does not mean that all the problem that comes from passport is directly from the embassy where we we reside. No, I don't believe that. There is, there is one of the, one of the main, the main issue we are having in Nigerian embassy room here is crowd. You find out that Nigeria immigration, Nigerian eh embassy room here, they don't even have enough manpower to attend to Nigerians. In Italy, let alone those ones that come from Sweden or Denmark. Now, how can we change that? This is what we should be talking about. It's not, why is this? We can talk. Somebody just said, yeah, seventeen years ago, people have been complaining, nothing has changed. So we need to deal with this issue in a different ballgame. We need to bring out a radical way. A mature way, not just talking blaming embassy every day, the same thing keep happening. And let me tell us the truth. And let me tell us the truth, for some of us who travel outside this Italy, you know, if you want to travel to maybe a country to US now, you find out that you don't go to, for some of us who live this area, I don't have to go to a US Embassy in Rome to get my visa to travel to US because they have consulate here in Milan, they have consulate there in Napoli. That is the question we need to ask ourselves. By the time crowd that goes to Paris for something, for passport issue, I'm not talking about scarcity of passport yet, because whether you have consulate or not, there is still going to be scarcity. But there are some other consular services embassy renders too, which they cannot even be able to maintain the pressure they are having. So it now falls on you and I, the leaders in Europe. Some of us have connection, like somebody introduces himself as a chairman of a political party. Now, these were, these are the kind of things we do for us to have a consulate anywhere in Nigeria. It's not just writing a letter to the embassy. You and I, how many of us have ever traveled to Nigeria and meet your lawmaker that is representing you in the House of Assembly? You ask yourself that question, you are leader, you go home, you put it in your budget today, talk to your representative, some of us goes home every four years to vote, some of us goes home to campaign. These are some of the radical ways we can tackle this issue because by the time you decentralize everything that is happening in any capital, and that is number one. So please, we are here to learn, you bring your opinion, we are not here to blame anybody. I have so many other things I want, I want to say in regards of NUNAI. I am not a historian of Naido. But whether we like it or not, Naido has come to stay, it's a creation of Nigerian Federal Government, so there is no two ways about that. Just like somebody rightly said, all of us are members on Naido and all Nigerians in Italy are also members of NUNAI. So we don't have choice than to work together. So please, when we want to speak, you don't throw out words that would discourage others in participating in what we are doing, please, it's very, very important, thank you very much.
Mr. Uche, Mr. Uche is NUNAI, NUNAI is Nigerian Association, National Union of Nigerian Association in Italy. So that's the national P R O and he has made his submission, thank you very much. Yes, the hand has been going up here, that's Mr. Azim Wukuru. All right, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, everybody, every citizen that is here listening to us. Please, I have two major points to make. One is to, there are certain things we are quite aware, but somehow we are not sensitive to it, or we are conscious of it, but we are not active to it. What do I mean? NUNAI and Naido, NUNAI and Naido. If anybody says there is no problem between NUNAI and Naido, he is right, but he is not completely right. There is a problem there and that problem also is historical. For those of you who are new to it, I am a historian of Naido and a historian of NUNAI. Now, what do I mean by that? Some years ago, Samod, the president, NUNAI president, will bear me witness. Some years ago, NUNAI and Naido and the embassy had a meeting. In fact, together with all local unions. And what is the aftermath of that meeting? There was a standing order and understanding that we had then. And that understanding has been recalled this evening by some speakers, like the speaker of Naido Vice President and the speaker from Lazio, Rome. And in fact, that would even clarify the speech made by, by the president of Naples. Now, there was a move for cooperation between NUNAI and Naido. And it was standard started with a clear understanding. And that understanding was that on quarterly basis, there would be meetings between Naido, NUNAI and the embassy and the local unions, two or three times in a year. Now, for that reason, when the present ambassador came, in fact, he came, he made the proposal and said he wants NUNAI and Naido to unite. And the leaders of these organizations said no, that, but they prefer cooperation. And in this preference of cooperation, then I came to NUNAI meeting in Firenze in particular. I asked if Naido and NUNAI cannot unite and prefer to cooperate, that cooperation should be seen being done. Now, since the present NUNAI administration started under the leadership of Samod, it's getting to three years now, there has never been no meeting between Naido and NUNAI and embassy and the local unions. That is a very, very strong misnomer because that would have given opportunity for all the local unions to make contributions, to harmonize issues and forge a way forward in the common things that affect Nigerians in Italy. Anybody denying that is only pretentious. Please, that issue should be addressed. I listened to what Paetro said, it's see the same call for that unity and harmony of purpose. Let nobody deny it if we must move forward or for a common purpose. Then, then secondly, what I have to say again concerning passport services and other services in Italy in particular. The P R O of NUNAI has mentioned it, that the embassy in Italy lacks manpower to effectively carry out and meet up with the amount of services on demand. And there had been proposals in the past to have consulates or services points outside the room. It was discussed and abandoned. We should find a way to revisit that idea. And one thing I want to emphasize emphatically here today for all Nigerians who are in this forum listening right now is that the amount of Nigerians that have flown into Italy has doubled and redoubled. If anybody is making fifty, for example, the man from France said that they give fifty passports a day in the past. In Italy here, the demand for passport per day is over two hundred passport demand in a day. And that means the need for passport to be tackled and be reported to the right authorities, especially the immigration in Nigeria. And it is the duty of the Nigerian Embassy to make that report. Now, to go back to what the P R O also said, he said that we are leaders and we need to make effort to reach the government at home. Mr. Samsonodji will bear us witness that the former NUNAI administration made a very, very serious effort. We wrote letter to the Senate of Nigeria, House of Threat, the Federal Government of Nigeria, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. When I visited Nigeria in two thousand and fifteen, I went to the Office of the Secretary of the Federal Government, demanding that there should be consulate somewhere else in Italy, particularly Milan and other places either in the south or far north. But there should be a form of decentralization of services to the congested Rome. Without that, all we are saying will come to naught. Then finally, the need to, like President Naido has proposed, there is need for all Nigerians in Italy conference. For all Nigerians in Italy conference. From there, we'll be able to draw up a working committee, bring up projects, bring up programs that will begin to tackle the issues facing Nigerians in Italy. Please let us be serious and not take this forum as main forum for legal services. It is good that it should yield practical, pragmatic result. Thank you so much.
Want to keep, some people that have been here for long, who want us to be too long, but let's begin to wind down. One more, okay, Mike, please go with five minutes, open your phone.
Okay, thank you, thank you, my chief mate, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, you probably in a place where there's no phones.
Okay. No, thank you, thank you very much. I want to recognize the, hello, yes, I'm hearing you.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to recognize the presence of the representative of the, the representative of Nigerian Embassy in France. Just like, I want to recall to what Paetro said on how the NUNAI and Naido can work together. But first, let me talk about the Nigerian Embassy. You see, when it comes to the services of the Nigerian Embassy here in Rome, just last week, yeah, let me give you one, just one testimony out of many. You know, I, I represent the Sicily when it comes to the consular services and passport issues in the Nigerian Embassy. I want to commend the ambassador of Nigeria, of Nigeria in Rome because he has done so much, made so much improvement on this issue of passport for Nigeria. First and foremost, they started from Palermo and they've been to to about two or three cities also, and they are improving, just like what happened in France, that somebody went to the embassy and he got, they got their passport, the same thing. You see, at the moment, because of this COVID nineteen thing, the embassy itself, they will not expose, the staff will not expose themselves to danger. They have to look for a way of covering these situations, you know? We as leaders, as the local or regional leaders of Nigerians in different cities, we have a very big role to play in this, in this area. Unlike me, you know, most times when I go to the embassy for services of passport for our people, I love what the immigration officer, the woman did. I pick those ones that have serious cases with their documents and I present them to the consular, Mr. Beru, most time to the ambassador and they will treat it to the, to the best of my knowledge. The immigration officer, the woman in Nigerian Embassy surprised me when I presented a boy, the boy went to the embassy and even showed his journal. He said, please, ma'am, a journal will be expired on the nineteenth of this month. After nineteen, I cannot longer retain a renewed journal without passport. And you know what she did? The, the man was scanned that very day and because we have time, a flight to catch up back to our city, we left. The next following week, I was in the embassy. The immigration officer, the woman called me personally and said, Pastor Mike, come and take the passport of that young man. She gave me the passport. You see, we cannot just be saying bad, 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 just like what the P R O said about the embassy. If we don't, this is like you say, it is arguably a bad, you tell me how you lie on it. If we don't build our embassy, we the leaders ourselves, then the, 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 the ones that are looking up to us, will condemn the embassy. If care is not taken, what happened in Indonesia, we repeat to other cities. But I'm not sure this can happen here in Italy because we the leader, we have a role to play to defend the embassy. I believe most of us, we all reside the, the national pledge. When we say I pledge to Nigeria, my country, to be faithful, loyal and honest, to serve with all my strength, I must, I know, to defend our unity and uphold. So how many of us are upholding the dignity of our country, are defending the Nigerian Embassy? What are you telling the Nigerians in your city, in your regions about the Nigerian Embassy? Try to defend them, if there's any issue presented to, we have a listening ambassador, present it to the ambassador and he will listen to it. Let me tell you one thing, I have never gone to Rome to see our ambassador on appointment. Whenever I knock his door, the door is open. Why? Because he knows I'm coming, I'm coming with Palermo or Catania or silly issue. They attend to me, you know, so when I come here, people are happy, ah, the embassy is doing well, embassy is doing well. Okay, just two days ago, I came with about ten letters of, letters of the same person. So people, they are finding difficult to go because of this COVID nineteen. But I got there, I brought it for them, they are happy, the boy that holds the passport, that boy now is singing praise of Nigerian Embassy everywhere. So before that time, just like what the terror of NUNAI said, we the leader, we, we have a role to play, that's my submission, thank you very much.
Very much, thank you, the leaders have a role to play. I believe we are all, we are all sharing this. So there are several hands going up, I don't know. Madame Evlin, do you want to make your submission now?
Hello, good evening everyone. I want to greet Mr. Damiani Ibrahim because he said he's not seen anyone here. So, sir, good evening, sir, and thanks for joining us on this forum. I still want to appreciate our presence and much. I appreciate also Mr. Mike Magazine, right?
Go ahead, thank you.
And our brother, Mr. Azim want to. I also, I followed all the contribution everybody made, our P R O, not forgetting. I followed up everything everyone said in this forum. You all spoke well and you all spoke my mind. Everything I had in my mind is what you all spoke. But the, the problem still remains there, how do we come in to assist our embassy? Because when I went to the embassy last, I saw everything, just like our P R O said, that they need manpower. I saw that what they were having on table is really much, much work more than them. And if I'm not wrong, I think the man from France also said that they are doing ten passports a day. I don't think Nigerian Embassy in Rome is doing ten passports a day, they are doing more than that because when I went to the Office of the Passport, they showed me so many products that are booked, is more than sixty people in it. I was even asking, how do you manage to survive this, it's really much?
Alpha, is it the, via what, via Poisaidon?
Excuse me, Mr. Alpha. So it's not really easy on them. So what I'm trying to say is, is how do we come in as Naido, as NUNAI members to assist the embassy from this stress? Because not only their fault, because like what I heard during that time, they say that it is the same measure of passport they give to France, they give to Italy. But Italy have the highest rate of people requesting for passports every day because this is the port of entry. Most people before they go to France, they've already gotten their passport from Italy. Most of them go to other, Schengen or European country and then US and London, they've already gotten their passports. But here in Italy, the demand is really much. And apart from passport, let's talk about also the welfare of Nigerians living. And apart from passport, let's talk about also the welfare of Nigerians living in our various provinces. I have an issue in my hand now. They called me from the camera motor alley. They told me there was a, a body of a Nigerian boy, sorry, this is not the topic, but I want to put this because it's what is bothering me now. They said he's not saying that, um, the body was abandoned in the mortality for more than one month now. Yeah, they'll be looking for the parents to come and claim the boy to go and bury. So they, they could not get any number. They now called me. Since then, I was able to get the cousin of the brother. But the cousin was telling me that he doesn't want to involve for the burial. Because the story behind the boy is much more mother him, that he doesn't want the parents to know that thing. The boy's die, the late boy's mother is late, is the father that is alive, is married to another woman now. So I think that was the only child the mother gave to the boy before she, she, she died. And now the boy is in mortality since twelve of March. So after the police, they are still looking for the people that killed him. They just released the body last month, it's a month now. But they are not able to get back to his cousin to come and claim the boy to go and bury. And this cousin don't want to even associate with the father of this boy. I'm most people around here that knows the father, I don't know them, but I'm still making requirements of that. So someone to give me the number of the family, so I can call the family of the boy. This is one of the issue that is really facing, um, the Nigeria Association. Because we don't have enough food in our pockets and we don't have this much power. Like we are so called presidents. We don't, I don't know about other people in another province, so. But we don't have, like, for example, I don't have the power to bury this boy because he has a parents, he has a father, he has a uncle, he has an auntie. And somebody is not giving us his number and the Italian government, they want to go and bury him. Me, my house are tight, me, I'm just the president and I don't really know what to do, I already called. Respect any point in society, so made us, they told me that if we don't find the parents of the boy, that we should remove our hand. And because of this boy, there is nothing that is good to write to me about because he died. While he was having drugs in his stomach and he was thrown away along the express. For somebody that was driving motorino machine, that saw the body and called the police. So it's really complicated, this is one of the problem we the presidents of the Nigeria Association is facing. And Mr. Sam, he always be of help because when I have some problem, for example, those that. That called me, they said they refused their nationality, instead of nationality, they needed passports from the Quistura. Why some parts of the Quistura are collecting, why some are rejecting, so I don't really understand that kind of issue. And I called their, our president was able to give me some directives. So there are so many issues, there are so many women, they are all mad in the streets here and then they have children. Instead of the government to ask who is the parents or a family of this woman, they would just take away the child. Not because the woman was not taking care of the child, but because she ran mad, she's insane. But this woman has the relatives, why would the government just call me and take away this child, just like that? What are we going to do concerning these issues? Because you as a president, if they come to you, they cry to you, you are not able to solve this issue. They will not, they will never, ever, ever value us, they will never, ever look us up. Human being, they would think that we are just there claiming we are not solving their problem. These are the problems I, that I'm facing. And apart from that one, you can imagine a pregnant Nigerian women, two of them fighting the streets with so violently. And the police will not say for you, you cannot even do anything. We today is okay, even when they see your presence, they don't want to stop, they still want to continue fighting. Because there's no fear and respect in them. This is another one, and also the same thing, our boys going around fighting with bottles. There are so many issues happening around our province, especially here in Ferrara. I don't really want to start bringing a lot of things out. How do we tackle this issue as president? When we are done, we don't even have money and we don't even have enough strength to further this issue. Because really, the, the, the weight is really heavy on only president and most Nigerian associations. It's only the president that is active. It's hard for you to see the executives that will walk along with you. Even though you see any executive, it is not even one or two, the rest will be telling you, I didn't work, I not get chance, my wife sick, my this one, my that one. Because you are the president, they will leave everything on you so heavy. That the body, that you at times you even get angry and say, who sent me work safe? Apart from that one, apart from, apart from that one. And you know, we have a lot of touches here, many Nigerians believe on their pastors. So for, uh, for here in Ferrara, thank God we are able to make friends with our pastors here. Just to make sure we get in touch to many Nigerians. But how do we solve this so many issues minus passports, which is the real bigger problem that we are facing? But other, yes, these other issues that we have attained, how do we solve it? How we deny to come into apples, how we do not come into apples? How do we tackle, how do we have this on Nigerian people? Because it's not really easy from there. Apart from that one, there are so many women with so many children with their husband or their so-called husband in the prison. They are roaming about the streets with these children on their back. They don't have job, they don't have anything, they just, I don't want to talk much more than this, thank you very much, God bless you.
That, that's Madame Evelyn.
Yeah, I did, yeah, sorry, I didn't introduce myself, I'm Evelyn Nowrom, Ferrara President, thank you.
Um, that, that's the Nunei, um, um, subgrid officer in Ferrara. Ferrara is a, a region in Milan, not of Italy, sorry, not of Italy, somewhere around Bologna. So, uh, she has poured out her heart as a mother, as a woman. Women see things deeper and she has really said some very deep things here. Yes, president, I think you are in the better position to answer, go ahead, sir.
Yes, um, thank you once again, uh, all these questions and related are very sensitive things. But this is not where we will answer all this. I will definitely consult with her and we can see how to do that already. That's why I have people like Omeliko in Napoli. Who is already being confronted with larger problem that we can imagine. I believe not quite too long ago, some people, we saw a video going viral in Nigeria was shocked. Uh, it happened that, uh, the story was, uh, being attacked by some mafia. I think immediately Omeliko came in and needed to in the pop, the problem were fully, so we will talk about it privately. What, um, I want to, so uh, follow the P R O, what he said earlier on. Problems can come in and if you look at Nigeria's living the passport. Their country differ, I mean, their problem differ by country they live in. But one thing is particular about them, there is always a multi-problem they go through. Now, we are now discussing passport, I don't think is the ideal time. Passport should be discussed, is a problem, but it will, we will not have exhaustive time to talk about it. I think I am well, well grounded in most of those things. So, like I said, we will take it, uh, one by one. I think if the message I got here was awareness that relevant that we need to play with the host country. So be able to earn our place against. And I want to follow the, uh, codmater in Sardinia. Who may mention some of the small initiatives that are doing around. What, to make sure that the whole area, you know, begin to see that also from where we come from. We have a structure and we can do things well. And I think if we, these are some of the takeaways we should be doing here this evening. Even for the second thing, you have to do with, uh, um, our, in Nigeria, the government today, one of the policies of diversifying in normal sector. It wasn't even brought, the issue is this, I would like to advise the moderator. When those become in, there are the timing, the discussions that are timing. And also people should stick to the subject when they are not, when they are deviating. Please, they have the caution, it's important, it is part of this devotion. From how the mission, this discussion, trying to show what you do, who are you and how this is, and what about this action, we have a staff. But either as it may, not as if obviously coming on for is not the bottom issue. But I also, it's also good to see at what point we are and where we are going to. Now, if we're talking about relevant, since there's no more time, I just want to conclude because I know we are winding down.
Yes.
In that, that's the point, if I may follow S M R, the secretary of, uh, he, he liked what he was supposed to say earlier, I thought he said it before. When you talk about Remitus, because one is that you have to divide what kind of Nigeria, those in the former sector and those in the internal sector. And that is why, that thing, when people are talking, do you understand about Naido? Naido does not people work by each formation and constitution, that's why what is called a member. So when you say is a historian, I think I'm more historian than he, because I know where all this is started. But the point is, they were supposed like Michael Meliko, to divert the attention and energy. To what this type of enhancing the economical potency or potential of the former sector. With the former sector of where we are and where they are, they are in other places, we are doing well. I think that has affected their Adrian in terms of the translation. So I'm well known, even in this forum we are talking about. I've been there, the other girl who is an essay, so the aftermath is how they are state, I knew her, hello, be, and I'm a leader. So I think I am well known and understand how this works. So it is important we look at what has been done in the part of Italy, also we exist here. So also make sure that the council of the former sector. And that is why I was saying, there is a problem between Naido and Nunei. And I stand with you. Something they have is always, when people try to go on aggravization. And drive a particular thing, you know, party, you are pitching yourself, because nobody is competing. Because we are moving to Nigeria, I'm in Nigeria. So they're, I'm telling you that today, we are going to harm the Senator Woby, who to call also investors to Nigeria. And if I may tell you, why that thing saw a big wall? Is the fact and parcel of that, the security problem in Nigeria is also hampering on some of our efforts. Remitus, as we say, is what should have been our law, our strong goal, to us influencing. To us advocating to the government at home, to make sure that we have a equal participant. In New York today, which is the Nigerian National Commission, which is held by a VKD. There's that issue going on now because there are the board that is supposed to be set up. And that board requires also part of the Nigerians in the Africa to be made of that board. It's all embedded in politics that is taking us to where. I was even so, I know, amazed, somebody talking about A B C, ah, Nigeria. Anyway, I wonder where we are going.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, no, no, you, you, you're, you're in order, sir. Thank you, I, I want us to begin to wind down so that, uh, uh, we can go to other activities you have. So it, it will be boring, next time we call for this town hall meeting, you will grumble and say, ah, that place they stay all day. So, um, it, it's wonderful to have everybody here. Even though we really didn't go into the subject, the questions, the subject for.
Man, I was joking.
The subject for today wasn't, uh, wasn't deliberated, but, uh, what you have all poured out is also very important. And, uh, town hall meeting is a place of expression, is a place of, of letting out your grievances and everything. So it's okay that we will all let out our, uh, submissions and hopefully as we keep on with the meetings. We will be having solutions and we will begin to have headway. These are the, uh, the beginning, these are the, the first step, like P R O Uche said. Journey of a thousand miles begins with one step, so we are in the first steps of our town hall meeting. So I want to thank you very much, yes, this, uh, honorable Matthew. Uh, I will allow honorable Matthew to make his submission and we will bring it to a close. Because he just came in, so you're welcome, sir. So open your phone and make your, open the phone.
Yeah, yeah, it can be back, get calabai, look.
Open the phone.
This is a no CD for eyes. Abby.
Hello, my people. Good evening and good to have you.
Yes, sir, I can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you very much. Um, it's my honor to join you. Um, we are part of the reformation of, uh, Nunei in Italy.
Okay, sir.
Few years ago and, um, I'm still happy, we are working strong with the very powerful leadership of, uh, Samson Hooch, honorable. Yes, um, most of the issues that are being raised here are not too far faced from most of the embassies. So, um, I think it will be necessary that we have some network to help us, um, have a kind of collective, uh, um, requests. In some of those areas that need to be touched, to be improved in the services of the embassy. At a time we have more voices from more countries to help them to take us a little more seriously. And again, I think then they just want us to show more example of how things should be done and accepting anything that comes our way. Um, and again, the bilateral relationship of each of the countries with the countries should be known by the leadership of the associations. And those areas so that to be able to know where. Do, I, I listened to when honorable Helen, Evelyn. Was trying to express some of the situations that are being seen, uh, in her Ferrara area, something like that. So, um, so this is when you don't have, I don't know, when the information of what's supposed to be done, I know too, Italy are lousy. In their relationship with the immigration, I know that is not, I don't think it has changed overnight. Um, but as well, I think as we grow, having at least now, most of the institutions who have their Naido. Nunei has grown for some time, suppose have gotten organized to affront the responsibilities a little more effectively. They might always support ourselves too, because I also listened to Evelyn too, where most people is. On election day, everybody will come in, shine and wants to do everything, but once election is done, everybody run away. Leaving the responsibility to only one person or two who may have won. That will not help in the growth of institutions. Once again, I'm very happy to join you here and wish all of us luck. Uh, the contributions are right, let's put them to use, thank you very much, thank for the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you, good one. So, uh, yes, Mr. Timothy, Mr. Timothy, you, you're free to open your phone now.
Okay, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh. And also good evening, uh, acknowledgement to honorable, uh, Mr. Dallami Ibrahim. And also to the, uh, chairman of, of the president of the, uh, Nunei and the same thing with my honorable colleagues from Naido. I'm actually, uh, Timothy Asutie, a financial secretary of Naido, uh, in Italy chapter here. The fact is, I, actually, we all, uh, you guys have actually, uh, had your, your, your contributions, which are very, very valid. And we hope that at least, uh, we have the same talent from each other. So to also know where we are lacking and the same thing, uh, also, uh, fix one of two leakage. That we, that we thinks that we can be able to, uh, to harmonize, to make things work out in the right direction. Uh, most especially regards to what P R O, or P R O said, is actually what I want to contribute. Because, uh, this issue of passport in embassy, which I believe that, uh, with collaboration of Nunei and the same thing with Naido. I think they all can, or with other representatives also, can actually harmonize together, uh, strategize. To actually see how we can, uh, make things easy for, uh, for the, in Nigeria Embassy here. Because for example, one thing that is actually difficult with, with Nigerians, it's actually that. If we are using one strategy this year, we always want to use this strategy in twenty years' time to come. So we don't know how to actually like update and see how like things are changing, what is needed to be done. What I'm saying this for example now, fine, I work with, uh, Prefetura, which is Prefetura of actually, uh, that of, uh, also the one of Biella and the one of Torino. Actually, we actually have here, in Torino here, many Nigerians who have actually for like three months ago booked their, um. Had their passport in Nigeria Embassy. See, see today, they only have their date normally, which is like August, September. But at the end of the day, you have to send in your, 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 not by gate. But at the end of the day, you have to send in your, your, your Novy again, okay, with your PIN, uh, your serial number, and so on, so that they can fix an appointment, a date for you. But we done, we've done all these things, nothing have been done, we haven't heard from them till now. But another issue, uh, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying this is that, during this COVID nineteen, there were so many documents that actually expired, you know, and we all understand that, uh, with the COVID nineteen, the Italian government actually gave them T, T first of July, uh, which make, by making all document validated, T first of July, which we all know that by August, things needs to be done. But T date, the last time, uh, when, uh, what I received from the embassy, which was last month, was the badge of October and November. So we are now talking about December. Those people that did passport in December, they have it now. So what about those one that we do their own now? So do we have it next year? Please, we are not living in the country, or Nigerians are not living here anymore, whereby we will say that, uh, we have about fifty thousand Nigerians. We have one hundred and seventeen, more than one hundred and seventeen thousand Nigerians living in Italy. And at least, I hope that with you guys up there, you guys can actually make embassy, uh, make, uh, the embassy to understand the importance of updating their system and restructuring on how they can fix this and make things work out to the average Nigerian are there, uh, on the street. Thank you.
Great, great talk. Thank you very much, Honorable Timothy. So, um, with this, we want to bring our second edition of our town hall meeting to a close. And, uh, hopefully, it continues. Um, like I said, Schengen Story Media is, uh, stationed in Milan, but we have coordinators and branches over Europe. So I'm handing over to my France coordinator to, uh, bring us to a close. Thank you.
Once more, good evening, everybody. I thank you all for your presence. I must give, uh, honor to whom honor is due. All of you are great people of this great nation. Um, High Minister, Honorable Dallami, we thank you for your presence. And we thank you for the fatherly role you are playing to see that Nigerians understand that civil servants are civil servants, public servants are public servants. That you are in a position doesn't mean you are a lord. I know that. And we are using this opportunity to thank you, and beg you also to help, uh, pass over this, your humility onto others, for them to understand that we Nigerians, we want something good. And if somebody is in a position of leadership, you should lead by example, and always love us, and not to push us down. Thank you so much. And, uh, my brothers and sisters, for this, uh, edition, second edition, we thank you for your presence. And we pray that the next time we will be here, everything will be okay, and more better, we'll have more participants. And we will stick to the rules and to the topic. A way forward for Nigeria, a way forward to see that, uh, we all communicate and show love to one another. We once more thank you. Honorable Esamwa, uh, Honorable Uche, Sam Hooch, uh, Omalike, Kinsley, Inda, PA, Timothy Evelyn, Michael Chingwe Loveling, Iwe, Fidel, Ayon, Michael Anderson, Timmy, Elvis, and the arm. You're all great people. As you go, may you find strength in the Lord to continue working for the good of Nigeria. Thank you once more, and don't forget, Schengen Story Magazine. We are here for all of you, for your events, marriage, wedding, naming ceremonies, events. And for the embassies, we are all here to cover your stories, and to also produce whatever you want us to do for you. We want to see that Nigerian voices are heard. We tell the story the Nigerian way, and that is telling the good things about Nigeria, and not allowing them to tell the things they feel they know about us. We say what we know about ourselves, and that is the truth. Thank you very much, and look forward to see you again in the next edition. God bless us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, uh, I just got an information that there was actually the, uh, the representative for Nigerian Embassy Rome, she has been with us, with the codename. And that is Madame Yezidide. So, uh, we thank you, Madame Yezidide. Uh, you chose to remain discreet. Well, you know best. So thank you so much, everybody. I'll be on the lookout for the next link, for the next meeting day. And also, like somebody observed last time, when we have the, the link, you send out to your followers, send out to your people, to your constituents and those be, following you. That way you can drag them in, and let's all have that chat, and build our better Nigeria in Daspora. God bless you. Have a great night, have a beautiful weekend, and see you next time. Bye bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.